I will call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, two, Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Gallery Room, Chatham Community Center, 115 South Main Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
We have Mr. Farmer on the phone, and Mr. Farmer, can you state your address that you're calling in from?
328 West St. Piper Parish, Nantucket, North Carolina.
Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here. I would ask that you would observe a moment of silence with me, please. Thank you. Would you please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Items to be added to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add the following item to the consent agenda as item seven N, amended county PCSA service agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion?
Can you do all of those in one motion to add to the agenda?
Are these other ones for the consent agenda to the?
They're going to be attached to the work session.
Okay. And I guess I also need to add the following items from matters from work session. Sheriff vehicle lease program, annual audit and financial report program for agencies is required in the fiscal year '21 budget resolution, and CRF funds for defibrillator purchase.
Okay. Mr. Davis, are you seconding that motion?
I'm seconding it right now.
Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote verbally, please?
Yeah.
Okay, all votes have been cast. Please record your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Ingram.
Second.
I got a second.
Seconded by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote verbally?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to consent agenda, which is board's pleasure.
Chairman, I make a motion. Will you approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Dudley.
Bless you.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote verbally?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to presentations.
We have none.
We have none tonight. We're down to hearing of citizens. Each person addressing the board under hearing of citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or an district agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his/her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Do we have anyone signing, Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Okay. We're down to public hearings. Item number 10A, rezoning. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and prosperity. Case number one, public hearing rezoning case R-20-012. I will open the public hearing at 7:06.
Case R-20-012, Buella Robertson, has petitioned to rezone a total of 2.22 acres located on Mill Creek Road in the Bannister election district from R1 residential suburban subdivision district to A1 agricultural district to combine with her adjacent parcels of land, zone A1. Planning commission recommended by unanimous vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the properties are rezoned to A1, all uses listed under section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Rich Armstrong is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Rexdale. Mr. Armstrong, do you have anything you'd like to add? Did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at 7:07 and pass the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Dr. Miller.
In case R-20-012, I'd like to move approval for this case.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Is any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Armstrong, property's been rezoned. Thank you. We're down to case number two, public hearing rezoning, case number R20-013. I'll open the public hearing at 7:08. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-20-013, Jeffrey and Wendy Davis have petitioned to rezone a total of 3.2 acres located on Pony Road in the Callens-Grettna election district from R1 residential suburban subdivision district to A1 agricultural district to allow for a second dwelling on the property for a family member. Planning commission recommended by unanimous vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the properties are rezoned to A1, all uses listed under section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mrs. Davis is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Davis? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I have nothing else to say except that we are just trying to help our kids out. Land is a hard thing to buy these days. We really would like to help them out.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Hunt, did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
We have no one signed up. I'll close the public hearing at 7:09, and board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, for case R-20-013, I'd like to make a motion that we rezone this property from R1 residential suburban subdivision district to A1 agricultural.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Please record your vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to item B.
Good.
Your property's been rezoned, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming.
We're down to item B. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, his or her place of residency. For non-county citizens, it is in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time, unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speakers allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. We're down to public hearing electronic gaming regulations. Ms. Rexdale, I'm going to open that public hearing at 7:11.
We are proposing to amend Pennsylvania County Code Section 35-356, 35-365, 35-366, and 35-375 to move electronic games under uses allowed by special use permit in, under B2. And then, under B1, we are proposing to add a definition for electronic gaming establishments. And then, we are also proposing to add that same definition under zoning classification B2 as well.
Any questions from board?
Yes, sir. Ms. Rexdale, were these the same corrections, amendments, changes that we looked at last month?
Yes.
So there's no changes to what we looked at before?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Rexdale? I think you commented the last time, Ms. Rexdale, that the ones that were already open in existence were grandfathered in, so.
Correct. So if they are legally operating as of the date that this is adopted, so tonight if it's adopted, then they will be considered grandfathered. However, they have to be through the process and in operation. So, most of them have required a change of use, and if they have not completed that process, they are not open and in operation, so they would then be required to have a special use permit to open.
I thought, and I may be wrong about this, but I thought we had some that had started the process or maybe advanced through part of the process, but had never actually opened their doors.
They have to be in operation, so they have to have opened.
So if they have not opened and taken in citizens.
That's correct.
Or for whatever purpose.
Correct.
They're out.
Correct. The governors, or the new legislation also goes into effect July 1, which does require them to have an active ABC license on file. And so, if they do not have that as of July 1, they cannot, they will not be allowed to open anyways. They also have to, will not be allowed to add any additional games other than what is listed on their ABC license as of July 1 as well.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Thanks, Ms. Rexdale. We'll close the public hearing. Did anybody sign up, Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
We'll close the public hearing at 7:14. Board's pleasure.
I make a motion that we approve that.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote verbally?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All votes have been cast. Please record your vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to public hearing number two, public hearing, board compensation adjustment to comply with Virginia Code. I'll open the public hearing at 7:14, and I think this is Mr. Smithmore or Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir. I'll take it, Mr. Chairman. According to Virginia Code 15.21414.3, county board of supervisors' salaries are established based upon population. Currently, the county does not come into compliance with that section, and the public hearing this evening is to adopt 15.21414.3 as the official compensation mechanism for the county board of supervisors, effective July 1, 2020.
No one signed up.
No one signed up, and I close the public hearing at 7:15. Board's pleasure.
Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the PCC 22-1 revisions in ordinance number 2020-06-01, effective July 1, 2020, as presented.
Second.
The motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? What I understand we're doing is we're bringing our policy in compliance with the state's policy, I mean, state's ordinances.
Yes, sir. Your current bylaws do not reference that statute, and we, per your direction from the retreat, it was the desire of the board to adopt the population bracket compensation method.
So the board's not getting mega raised. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yeah.
Need one more. Wait, hold on, wait a little bit. All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're down to a public hearing, forestry equipment, personal property tax exemption. I'll open that public hearing at 7:17, and I think this is Mr. Hunt.
Sure. In their last session, the Virginia General Assembly passed HB 1021, which is in your packet, that effective July 1, 2020, local governments are given the discretion to adopt an ordinance to exempt from local personal property taxation, farm machinery and farm implements, which shall include equipment and machinery used for forest harvesting and civil cultural activities. At the board's legislative committee meeting in May, the legislative committee unanimously recommended to full board that authorize county staff to advertise for potential revisions to Pennsylvania County Code Section 6-3.1, local county tax exemption, exempting from local personal property taxation, equipment and machinery used for forest harvesting and civil cultural activities. This matter was advertised in the newspaper as required, and we have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Chad Shelton. Mr. Shelton, come in.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Chad Shelton. I live in the Callens-Grettna district here in Pennsylvania County. My family and I run HJ Shelton Logging Incorporated here. We're just based just east of here, about three or four miles out of the town of Chatham here. In forest operations, we're, you know, we're at the mercy of the markets as to what we get paid for the products that we deliver. Most markets now have suppliers on strict quota, which has limited us on production as to what we can produce in a week. Over the past few years here in Pennsylvania County, we have lost two pretty major markets. We lost the Pennsylvania Power Plant up in the northern end of the county, which, that was a really big hit for us. And then, just here in the last year, I think, year, year and a half, we lost a hardwood and pine sawmill in the Blair's community over here. And, you know, that really took away from, you know, we had to venture out to find other markets to move that product. The exemption for personal property tax and civil cultural equipment for our logging equipment would substantially help us sustain our business. I've just asked for your support to grant this exemption in the county code to mirror what the state did unanimously. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Chair.
No one else signed up?
No, sir.
I close the public hearing at 7:20, and what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Pennsylvania County Code 6-3.1 revision, effective July 1, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there further discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir, for coming. Appreciate you guys.
Public hearing, land easement and right-of-way property disposition. I'll open that public hearing at 7:20, and I think Mr. Hicks is going to speak to this. Mr. Smithmore.
Who are you going to hand it off to?
Yeah, we played paper, rock, scissors before the meeting, and I lost. So this evening, you're presented a proposal by Mountain Valley Pipeline, South Gate Project to cross the Pennsylvania County landfill, which is about 454 acres, to parallel the existing Williams Transco easement. This consideration for this about 16-acre easement is $1.25 million. As required by Virginia Code, we are to advertise any disposition of public property and hold a public hearing prior to that disposition, as that our use and enjoyment of this area is to be relinquished too. Mountain Valley Pipeline is considered a disposition, and it's necessary that we open and hold a public hearing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. We had three individuals sign up. The first one was Katie Whitehead.
First, I need to say that I am comfortable being the only person in this room wearing a mask. Have none of you lost anyone to the coronavirus or imagined losing them? I'm Katie Whitehead, Chatham Blair's district. My husband and I own property in tight squeeze. Williams Transco has a 155-foot wide, non-exclusive right-of-way that runs approximately half a mile across our land, and I'm just distressed about this, as much as the pipeline. Half a mile across our land from Route 29 to the Bannister River. It currently contains four large pipelines of fiber optic cable and space for a fifth Transco line. Over Williams Transco's objections, MVP is proposing a new pipeline route which would come onto our property a little further south at an angle to the existing Williams Transco right-of-way, but would then overlap and parallel the Williams Transco right-of-way and go south to and across the county's landfill property. We received our first easement package from MVP on June 8, just a week ago. It contains most of the same boilerplate language that is in the landfill easement in your packet. With no evidence that Pennsylvania County was negotiating changes in that boilerplate language beyond the one item in bold about a heavy equipment crossing, I felt compelled to comment in detail. I submitted written comments yesterday. My husband and I oppose the MVP South Gate. Williams Transco already delivers gas to Dominion Energy, North Carolina, MVP's only buyer for the South Gate project. If more gas were needed, Williams Transco could expand to deliver more gas with less negative impact on landowners and the environment than MVP South Gate, and at less cost. That said, I am not here to ask you to deny this easement offer. I am here to encourage you to take the landfill easement documents seriously and not sign it without significant revisions. My family has lived for 70 years with the unanticipated negative consequences of the Transco easement that my parents naively signed in 1949. Now is the time to avoid repeating such a mistake. Please take care to protect the interests of Pennsylvania County by revising this easement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead.
The second person shined up is Lisa Shorter.
My name is Lisa Shorter. I live in the Bannister district. My address is 220 Fairview North, Chatham, and I run a veterinary clinic right here in the town of Chatham. I'm not here to oppose it. It's coming through my land as well, and I'm still trying to negotiate with them. My point here is, I think, once you figure out what you're going to accept or not there, as well as who makes the decision, I assume it's you all in the other end of the county, I think that will affect us all that hadn't made our decision yet. I have a 229-year-old home on the property that they're coming very close to. I am very concerned about anywhere from 40,000 pound of equipment to 140,000 pound of equipment breaking the foundation on that home. You know, they're not very far. They're going 2,100 feet on my property, which is the furthest width I have on my entire property. But I'm not, I just want you to think about it. I just want you to make a wise decision for all of us, because it does affect all of us. And I've worked my whole life for this property and have finally got it paid off, and now this happens. I have Transco as well right beside it, and the reason they're coming so close to me and my historic home, which is on the national registry since 1969, is because water in a pond is on the other side, so they've got to come, and Transco, they're coming south of Transco. So, I'm not here to be a negative. I'm not here, I'm here to, I hope you all will support us if we support you, and that's what I'm, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Next, Mr. Hunt.
Yes, the third person signed up, and the final person, is Kathy Nicholson.
Hi, my name is Catherine Nicholson. I live in the Chatham Blair's area. I'm not here to say that I am opposing this. I'm here to say thank you. Your first offer was 500,000, I believe, and you've increased it to 1.25 million. I am a landowner. I currently have Transco coming on one side of my house, and Mountain Valley wants to go on the other side. So, I appreciate the increase that the county should be receiving in the price per linear foot, because I'm using that as a means of negotiation with Mountain Valley. So I'm just saying thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholson.
No one else to sign up, okay? I'll close the public hearing at 7:28. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the disposition of the property, and subject to legal review and approval, authorize the county administrator to sign any necessary related documentation to effectuate the scene.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Scares, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're down to public hearing, Callens Sail Tower Lease. Mr. Hicks, and I'll open that public hearing at 7:29.
I couldn't pass this one off. Now, we have a company, New Singular Wireless, wants to install equipment on the Callens Tower, and this will be the third tower we, you know, use this year. They're proposing a lease at an annual rate of $26,200. As the other cases, before we can execute the lease, the board has to have a public hearing. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions, report, Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Chairman, no one signed up to speak on this case.
Yeah, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty and ask the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, so moved, approval?
Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yep.
Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're down to item six. Public Hearing Cares Act Budget Amendment Public Hearing, and I'll open that public hearing at seven thirty. Board's pleasure.
No.
I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis.
Yes, tonight's public hearing is to hear citizen input on the recent funds that we received from the federal government as coronavirus relief funds in the total amount of five million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. And so the Virginia Code, section fifteen point two dash twenty-five oh seven, states that any locality can adjust its budget by the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the current fiscal year, shown in the currently adopted budget as prescribed by fifteen point two dash twenty-five oh four. However, if such amendment exceeds one percent of the total expenditure shown in the currently adopted budget, we must hold a public hearing to hear citizen input before you all can vote to have those monies added. So these funds are for, in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic that happened, and these funds must be spent by December the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and must be spent for expenditures incurred due to the pandemic. So tonight, we are listening for citizen input on adding these funds to our two thousand and twenty budget because we have already incurred expenditures due to COVID.
Mr. Chairman, no one signed up to speak for this public hearing.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-two and ask the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put that in a motion, the Cares Act, so we can compensate, cover our charges, our costs during the year.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Dr. Miller. Is any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yep.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. We're down to old business, and we do have one item to vote, old business. And Mr. Plushman, I need that back, the resolution for the Sheriff Department. And I want to ask the sheriff to come forward and all board members to come forward for assigning my agreement. And this, you know, I asked that step for one of his old bits.
It's, it is truly my pleasure as chairman to get the opportunity to sign this agreement tonight. And I'm speaking on behalf of the board. We're very excited. This board is very supportive of our law enforcement and very appreciative of the job they do and the sacrifices they make. And through a little bit of work, little bit of work, we've been able to get to the point where they're signing on to part of the county's personnel that will involve raises for these gentlemen, that's well deserved. And it's also going to be retroactive back to January because they make our lives a lot better. They're always the first one there and in harm's way quite often. And I will say kudos to Mr. Scars, Dr. Miller, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Ingram, who's our finance committee members, for working through this process and all. And I want to thank the sheriff because through this process and looking at our personnel policies and all, there were some things brought forward that really helped us get things better within the county. So it wasn't just y'all come join us, it was truly negotiations and bringing up some points and helping each other. So we really appreciate it, and we wanted to sign this so the entire public and we can say thank you to our law enforcement for the job well done and tell you how much we appreciate you all. So. Make sure I don't sign on your spot.
Anything to say, please, there?
Yep.
And Sheriff Taylor, do you have any comments you'd like to say?
This is, this is just a historical moment for the sheriff's office because I think it has drawn our office closer to the county, overall county. And we're a constitutional office, so there is somewhat of a division in that as far as the government is concerned. But the board, the finance chairman and the members, we work together. We had several meetings about this. We had several drafts that were changed. Ms. Vanderheide, Mr. Smith, they were very helpful in this. And we just appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity for the deputies to be recognized and compensated for the hard work that they do to keep all of us safe, keep the government intact in our locality. So it's just, it's a good evening for this, and we appreciate all the efforts that went into it. It was a well thought-out agreement. We went over it line by line, word by word, more times than probably we want to talk about. We did not lose friendship by any means, but we disagreed on some things, agreed on others. So I appreciate the opportunity, and it makes us feel just a little bit more like we are part of the overall accounting team. So thank you again, Chairman Moore.
Thank you, sir. And we left one name out we can't leave out, Holly Stanton.
Holly Stanton.
She did a super job, a human resource director, and moving us forward.
Thank you again.
Really appreciate it. Thank you all, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
We sent you guys, thank you so much.
All right. Any other unfinished business, Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Okay, we're done with new business, do we have any?
No, sir.
Appointments, thirteen A. Appointments for Dammel Pennsylvania County Community Service, Westover District, Mr. Skiers.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Lori Eames Brooks as the county's Westover District Representative to the DPCS Board for another three-year term beginning July one, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Is any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I did ask around to other board members, and Lori's doing an excellent job, and she's, really appreciate her stepping up to for another term. You love it when you make a good pick to get on these boards, and you love it even more when they want to serve again. So I appreciate Lori stepping up again for this three-year term.
Okay, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yep.
Please record the vote. The motion carries unanimously. We're down to thirteen B, appointments, Dammel Pennsylvania County Community Services, Dan River District, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Sid Allgood to the DPS, or DPCS. He thanked me, first time I put him on there, he said it opened up his eyes to a lot of needs in the community. And he was humble about thanking me for allowing him to serve on that board, and I think he's done a good job, so I recommend him.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? I'd just like to make one comment. I've had the privilege of serving on that board with both of these individuals the last three years, and they have been very active and very engaged, have done a great job to represent Pennsylvania County on that board, so. Been a privilege to serve with. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yep.
All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Down to thirteen C, appointment, Library Board, Westover District, Mr. Scars.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sandy Mitchell as the Westover District Representative to the county's Library Board for a four-year term beginning July one, two thousand and twenty.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to give a little bit better background with Ms. Mitchell. She is a former teacher and principal, and I think she'll be a good addition to the library board. She's looking forward to serving, and I appreciate her taking the time out to help support the county.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yep.
Please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Thirteen D, appointment, Library Board, Tunstall District, Mr. Ingram.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Deborah Turner as a Tunstall Representative on the county's Library Board for another four-year term beginning July one, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ingram, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yep.
All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to matters from work session, fourteen A, vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. Somebody got that motion?
Do we just need to make the motion? Yes. For no discussion at this point?
Unless you'd like for me to present, that'd be fine.
No, it's all right. I'd make a motion to approve the sheriff vehicle lease program as presented in the work session.
Second. I think I got it.
Mr. Scars, make some motion, Mr. Dudley, second. Any discussion on the motion?
I got two other motions if you guys will make.
I ain't getting into that.
Please cast your vote.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yep.
Please record the vote. All, the vote carries unanimously. We're down to fourteen B, audit in nine ninety. Reporting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make motion to approve the annual audit and financial report program for agencies as required in the fiscal year, twenty-one budget resolution is presented in the work session.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. David, uh, Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Davis. There's a further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
No.
All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries five to two. We're down to fourteen C, defibrillators.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the CRF funds for defibrillator purchase as presented in the work session.
Second.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please record your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote?
Yep.
Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that completes the business items. We're down to board members' reports. Mr. Farmer.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Dudley.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'm just glad to see that we have signed over with the Sheriff's Department. I think Mike does a wonderful job and, and just, it's a, it's a good day to be together and just working together. And I'm thankful for that. Also, you know, I, I think I mentioned it most every meeting, since this COVID-nineteen, we've been helping to feed the children. Started out feeding in Hurt, just the Hurt Elementary children. And we reached out to Mount Airy School to help feed those elementary children. And then when Grutna quit feeding several weeks ago, we picked up Grutna Elementary too. As of this coming Friday, we're going to be, we will have fed somewhere around eighteen hundred children since this COVID-nineteen started. So, you know, it's a blessing, it's a lot of hard work, it's knocking on doors. But, you know, I just, I'm thankful that we're able to do it and, and just step up and do this work, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I likewise would like to welcome Sheriff Taylor and the department to the other side, I guess we could say. But thank you for all that you and your staff do to protect us, and very grateful for that. Some of you know I lost my aunt Nonnie this, this month. She was only a hundred and four. She'd have lived thirteen days, she'd have been a hundred and five. But she was married to Nelson Burnett, who retired from the county, as one of the first building inspectors, so just a little history there. Also wanted to give a thank you to John McKinney Senior. He, this month, celebrated serving in the Dammel lifesaver crew for fifty-five years. A lady that I never met, Jordan Key, lives here in Main Street somewhere. She would go over and give water and snacks to the folks lined up at the DMV in masks for those that didn't have a mask. So that's a very special thing to do. And the two thousand and twenty graduates who will not enjoy walking across the stage like most of us did, but very thankful that, that they did in fact graduate. So having said that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Dr. Miller.
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Davis.
I'd like to thank the staff, Mr. Hicks, Caitlin, Kim, Mr. Bumper, who helped me out today for an old man situation. And it was Mr. Smith in council for doing a great job. I appreciate the work you guys are doing. I want to thank Mr. Slim for the work he does. I want to thank the media for what they do. Naturally, we have to thank the sheriff for what they do, all of his deputies, appreciate every one of them. And then I had one other that I was looking at, and I do appreciate the citizens that come out. Ms. Shorter, Ms. Nicholson, and Mr. Angu, that, that come and make, you know, make statements and really help us and guide us and direct us. We appreciate the, the activity that the citizenry show us because quite often, we don't have all the answers, and we need help and input from outside sources, and that'd be you all. So thank you for your commitment, for coming tonight. And I believe that'll be it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Scars.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank all, all the staff that was involved with getting this contract completed with, with the sheriff. It was important, I think, especially in this time, to make sure that our deputies know that we appreciate the job we're doing and, and to make sure that we compensate them properly. So I appreciate the sheriff and the hard work he did with, with all of us trying to get this pushed through. And especially after the governor has tried to penalize law enforcement across the board this year. And I think it was really important that we showed how much we support our county's deputies. So thank you, Sheriff, and thank you, Mr. Smith and Kim, for all the hard work you guys did. guys did.
I have just a couple of items I'd like to mention. I do want to echo the comment Mr. Davis made in relationship to our citizens' participation. We do appreciate it very much, and I want you to know we're listening, we hear what you say, and appreciate you all coming out and making those comments tonight during our public hearing opportunities. So I also want to thank Mr. Farmer for pretty much giving up about half a day today to participating in the meetings while he's on vacation with his family and all. Thank you very much, Mr. Farmer, that shows your commitment and dedication to your service, and we really appreciate that.
Yes, sir, any comment?
Item three, return to work. Mr. Smithman, I appreciate you making that decision to get all of our staff back in and working at the, the offices. I think it's important for them to be there. Citizens like to have that personal contact, and I certainly hope everyone is, is participating and coming along fine with that item. The other thing I want to say is, in reference to some comments that were made earlier tonight, this room was set up based on the guidelines for the virus and keeping everybody six foot apart from, from the room setup, including us around, the board members around the room. We have also provided masks if anyone needed one or wanted one when you came into the building and into the facility. We are very conscious of the COVID, but we're trying to practice good social distancing without infringing on anyone else's rights and commitment to how they feel about a particular situation. So I wanted to comment on that. Lastly, I respectfully want to ask all of our community and our citizens to continue to remember our sheriff and deputies and their department in your thoughts and prayers. We're in some very unusual and uncharted times for our country, and they're on the front lines of that, and we need to be thinking about them and remembering them and their families as it's got to be a very stressful time. So we're down to county administrator reports.
I'd just say one thing, Mr. Chairman, and it's about the finances of the county. This is the end of the fiscal year. We've got 14 days left. A few months ago, we didn't know where we would be, but things are, our county has done well, both the businesses and the private sector, as well as the county government. We have been working hard the last three years to return the county to an in the black operation, and I don't anticipate that FY '20 will change that trend that we've been on now three years in a row. So a lot of thanks to all of our employees, to the board, to the finance committee, to the finance office, and Kim Vanderhyde. I think we have finished 2020 very well, and looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman. Mr. Hunt, do you have anything to say? No, sir. Okay. Having completed the agenda of a cloud meeting adjourned, I hope you enjoy your vacation, Bill.
Thank you, guys, be safe.